Good evening. We would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is the first day of school, Tuesday, September 2nd, is that correct? Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaGranne.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
He's on his way.
Pastor Moody.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slate.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
President Faul.
Here.
We have a quorum with eight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some moves?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda are our celebrations.
Dr. Faul, members of the board, I'd like to ask Ron Gorman to come up. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Neal, President Faul, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing us to speak this evening. Always a pleasure to recognize one of our very talented educators in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. With me this evening, I have Mr. Michael Paschal, who is the principal of City High Middle. And I also have Ms. Anita Vassidens, who is a mathematics teacher at City High Middle. Ms. Vassidens is being recognized with a national honor this evening. And at this time, I'm going to let Mr. Paschal tell you a little more about it. Mr. Paschal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gorman. Good evening, Ms. Neal, board members. No student reps tonight. Thanks for having us. We appreciate you taking a few minutes out of tonight's board meeting to celebrate one of our phenomenal teachers in the district. Just to put a little background on it, Mrs. Vassidens was 200 of 4,000 applicants for the LearnZillion Curriculum Dream Team, developing inquiry-based lessons and instructional resources to support the Common Core for teachers across the nation. So, pretty special part there. She has been in the district for 18 years, 17 as which has been at City High Middle School. She's a proud product of GRPS, attending Aberdeen, Riverside, and valedictorian of Creston High School.
Oh, right.
How about that? So, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Mrs. Vassidens to talk about the impact this has had on her as a professional. Neal?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Neal, members of the board. And I want to begin by sharing a quote that was shared with me at Teach Fest, which is the name of the professional development given to the members of the Dream Team, and it goes as follows. "Communities are not built of friends or of groups of people with similar styles and tastes, or even people who like and understand each other. They are built of people who feel they are part of something that is bigger than themselves, a shared goal or enterprise, like righting a wrong, or building a road, raising children, living honorably, or worshiping a god. To build community requires only the ability to see value in others, to look at them and see a potential partner in one's enterprise." You know, this summer, I got to rub shoulders with 200 other top-notch teachers from all over the country. And it was obvious that we were, and we still are, that community. And we all had this common goal of creating powerful resources that are going to create a quality educational experience for our students. I got a chance to share all the experiences I gained as a teacher in GRPS and my IB training. And I also got, received constructive feedback to help me improve as an educator. A common phrase that you'll hear among Dream Team members is scaling your impact. And it's a humbling feeling to know that I've contributed to one of the fastest-growing ed tech companies in the nation. And teachers and students nationally and internationally are going to benefit from this. And just today, I received an email from my former intern, who's now a teacher in Alaska. He was just telling me that today, he's going to use his very first LearnZillion lesson plan. And if you see on the screen in front of you, there's thousands of videos, some of those I've created, and then hundreds of lesson plans to complement those videos that teachers can use right now, today, in their classrooms. My biggest takeaway from this experience is that I was given a chance to dive deeper into the Common Core and understand what this is about. I realized that for my students, the greatest factor that will influence their perception and understanding of math is the task at which I frame the mathematical concepts. Scaling my impact as a teacher reaches far beyond the walls of my classroom. And then there's another phrase among the Dream Team, and that is polishing the stone. We're constantly reflecting and revising and reflecting and revising. So, my other takeaway is that I realized I'm going to constantly be a student of my own profession. So, I hope in the near future to be able to share this website with our curriculum leaders, our math leaders, and our ELA curriculum leaders in our district. And I just want to thank Superintendent Neal for your nice letter over the summer and your kind words, and for the board for this evening, and for this recognition.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
And I also want to give you the award for getting my daughter back on track in math. Because at the end of the year, she's like, "Oh, I don't have to study as much because I know it really well now." I said, "Get in there and study." But anyway, she did. At the beginning of the year, it was different, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, that's great.
Sorry. Awesome.
No student representatives yet? I guess next couple of weeks, we'll be working on that. Mr. Ross, do we have other items?
No, ma'am.
Right. Secretaries report, Mr. Ross?
Oh, I don't have anything to report today. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
I do. I would like to first report on the first day of school. And people in the district know that I'm not saying this lightly. All day, I've been waiting for the shoe to drop, and it never did. It was the best opening of school that I've ever seen in GRPS. And I want to thank all of our staff members, it's the teachers and the public safety officers, family support specialists, peer pros, the cooks. Everyone in the district truly pulled together to make this just a wonderful day for the kids. So, all is good. It was great. After that? It was great. And you can ask anyone in the district, and they'll tell you how wonderful of a day this was, right? It wasn't just me. And I also want to report, the middle school students did wear their uniforms, you guys. I did worry over that last night. And then I would like to introduce the new school administrators. I'm going to ask Sharon to come up front. We have new members that joined the team. And I would just like for the board members to see who those folks are.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Board members. I am very pleased to introduce to you all Ms. Laura Lamore, the new Executive Director of Special Education and Early Intervention Services. Ms. Lamore has extensive experience and background in special education. She served as a teacher, a principal, a central office administrator. Laura worked for Oakland County, where she was responsible for conducting monitoring of special education programs and services for that county. She also worked as a consultant for the Michigan Department of Education's Office of Special Education, where she was responsible for case management of the state's complaint process, providing technical assistance to districts, ISDs and agencies, and families, and leading the state's IEP development process, among many other things. Before joining GRPS, Laura worked for the Alligan Area Educational Service Agency, where she served as the Director of Special Education. However, what's most exciting to me about Laura is her desire to work for the students at Grand Rapids Public Schools. She told me that she would constantly monitor our website for opening positions and was just thrilled when this position became open, if she had an opportunity to apply. So, please join me in welcoming Laura Lamore. And today is Laura's birthday. And if I could add something, I'd really want to welcome you here. We have mutual friends down that way from my years in Kalamazoo County, so, welcome.
Thank you. Feels great to have landed.
So, after that, I am going to ask several of the executive directors to come up and introduce members of their divisions. So, I'm going to start with Mel.
Say, "Good evening."
Good evening.
I want to introduce two people today. And the first one is Maya Frazier. And you know her work through the students. Maya, if you can stand up real quick. Maya came from really Union High School before then Creston. And if you see the Gates Scholarship Millennium Winners, there's someone always behind advocating for those students, and that's always been Maya. So, Maya's joined our team here as a counselor coordinator, and so we welcome her to the team. Yep, the second person I'm going to introduce is on this side, is Paris McMurray. Paris McMurray is currently the Dean of Students at Martin Luther King Leadership Academy. He ran our summer school program at Burton Elementary and Middle School and received rave reviews. He's been with us for six years, and he has wealth of knowledge and experience that we're happy to have him as a hearing officer for Community and Student Services. So, please welcome Paris McMurray.
I'm going to ask Rick Knoll to come up.
I always try to come with a gift. Superintendent Neal, President Faul, board members, you have a Kling, a Klingon, I think they're called, which if you read it very carefully, says, "Follow me to a world-class preschool." We're going to ask you to put these in the windows of your car. They won't detract from the resale value because they peel right off when you get a new car. Make sure, as you know, the governor has significantly increased our state's investment in early childhood and preschool programs. And the individual that I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight is the gentleman who's going to make sure that happens with equity across the district, Matthew Barrisford. Matthew, yes. Matthew is uniquely capable of this, in this position, because he's homegrown. He's one of our own.
Good.
And so, we're trying to grow capacity always. So, welcome, Matthew. Also, to my right, I would like to welcome Stephanie Villalta, who is our recently-appointed Principal of Kenosha Park Elementary. Stephanie served as Assistant Principal at Harrison Park, and then Assistant Principal last year at Kenosha. So, she assumed the leadership role this year through retirement. So, welcome to the team, Stephanie.
Madam Kano.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I too would like to introduce new members to our team. I would like to introduce Mr. Rodrick Wade. Mr. Rodrick Wade is the new principal at Alger Middle School. And Mr. Rodrick Wade is from Minnesota. We welcome him to Grand Rapids. He's a former administrator in Minnesota. He has a wealth of experience to share with us. So, welcome. I would also like to welcome our new Assistant Principal at Alger Middle School. She is a former, she was working at Alger last year as a student interventionist. Did a wonderful job. We're glad to have her back as Assistant Principal. She also has administrative experience from Mesquita. Welcome. We're glad to have both of you.
Hello again. We have one addition to the high school family. This gentleman has been with us for the last couple of years. If you were a member of the governance boards at Union High School, when it was placed on the state's lowest 5% list, or Ottawa Hills High School, when it was placed on that list, you will be familiar with Mr. Brad Lundvik. So, Brad? Brad was very instrumental in helping the schools get off those lowest 5% lists. He is a data guru. He knows how to share data with teachers in a user-friendly manner. We had to hold on to him. He's a phenomenal member of our team, and I'm just so appreciative he joined this phenomenal GRPS team. So, thanks, team. We appreciate it. Brad?
Welcome, team.
Next on our agenda are the action items. And it is with great pleasure, our first agenda item was presented to our Academic Achievement Committee.
Did we forget somebody?
Think you missed somebody? Did you miss somebody?
There's another person.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Laura gets to come back up. Come on up, Laura.
I wonder where the special ed?
That's right.
Thank you. I have two really highly skilled and well-thought-of administrators to introduce you to this evening. The first is Ms. Angel Day. She is our new principal for the KEC Oakley position. She comes to us from a life dedication in center-based programming. And when asked during her interview process, if, you know, if she was ready to take on this next-up leadership, she said she has spent 17 years preparing for this. So, we're really thrilled to have her. She is definitely dedicated to nurturing some of our toughest individuals and getting them to where they need to be next. So, I'd like you to join me in welcoming Ms. Angel Day. Our next administrator is Christine Robertson. Christine Robertson comes to us from Traverse Bay ISD. Christine is a former Westsider who went north for a very short time and is now back where the grass is greener. We're glad to have her back. She is the building principal, let me see if I get this right, Kenosha at Van Aken Early Childhood Special Education Center.
Very good. So, next on our agenda is the action item. The Academic Achievement Committee was the museum school. Center of Innovation Application was presented to them in great depth and sent on with great excitement. And it is our job tonight to approve that as well. But before so, I get a little presentation before I call for a motion.
John, and?
Good evening, President Faul, members of the board, Superintendent Neal. I'd like to invite a few of our colleagues up. Dale Robertson, who is the President and CEO of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. Carol Morn, who is the consultant, who Kendall has so generously supported for, how long now? Years?
We're not counting.
No, I know. Cindy Todd, another one of our colleagues from Kendall Ferris. And then other members of our team. And we had Carolyn Evans, Rick Knoll, Maida, now Ron Gorman. We've had quite a team that's comprised. And this doesn't even include all of them. Obviously, Dr. Faul, you've been a key member of this. Dr. Baker actually helped on a running day with Dale Robertson, came up with this idea. And so, you know, this is nearly two years in the making. And so, it's real special to be here tonight to present you with what I would argue is one of the finest pieces of work we've put together on developing a new school, a new Center of Innovation with the Grand Rapids Public Museum School. As you know, this will be a 6th through 12th grade school that would open in fall of 2015 with 6th grade, 60 students total, 2 sections of 30. And it will add a grade each year until it grows to be a 6 through 12. It would be at the Vannanal Museum Center for the middle school level. And then eventually, the high school would expand over to 54 Jefferson, which is the original public museum facility. And Dale, I'm sure, will share a little history because that apparently belonged to the GRPS at one point in time. And that will require some renovations. But our friends at the Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., and the DDA have provided us with some consultants to assist in this. And the level of media attention, interest, we have people already calling and saying, "Can I apply? How do I get on the list?" And so, we anticipate this will be a highly successful school. And really, it's been thanks to our friends at Kendall. Mike Postumas, who couldn't be here, is with Grand Valley State and their Place-Based Education. It has just been a remarkable partnership and complex. You have a lot of different players. The city owns the collections and the facilities, the museum, and the building authority. But we've worked our way through it. We have this Center of Innovation presented to you tonight. We have a memorandum of understanding ready to go shortly thereafter, and a few other steps toward approval. But with your blessing, we're ready to get started and be hiring a leader as early as this fall and teachers to get ready for the following school year. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dale to say a few words.
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the board, I'm Dale Robertson, President of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. I was saying to the chair a little earlier, when I'm out of careers, I would find myself working with the House, State House Insurance Committee, and it was chaired by State Representative Matthew McNeely, Democrat from southwest Detroit, just pretty close to where I was from. And I always wanted to talk. And he would say to me, "Dale, the votes are there. If you talk, you might mess it up." And 30 seconds later, the bill would be reported and the meeting would be adjourned. I'm going to risk it tonight. Because I do think this is, as John said, a special, a special event tonight. And I would like to share just a little bit of the history here. Museum turns 160 years old this year. It's the oldest museum in the state of Michigan. It's the second-largest museum in the state of Michigan. And for 150 of its 160 years, it's had a connection to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and the Board of Ed. The origin, the land in which the old museum building sat on was donated by the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Before there was a separate building, the artifacts were stored at Central High School. And then in 1904, really control passed to the city of Grand Rapids. And to this day, as John mentioned, all the land, all the buildings, and all the collections are owned by the city of Grand Rapids. Therefore, the foundation to which I work holds those in trust for the people. And it is correct, it's some conversations that have gone on here through a team, this entire team led by Grand Rapids Public Schools, working with the museum and Ferris, and Kendall College of Art and Design at Ferris, and the College of Education at Grand Valley, and now the city, and others, all coalesced around this principle that these publicly-owned collections needed to be used for the highest and best purpose. And the highest and best purpose of everyone around the table, I'm looking at a few of them right here, was for education. And from that point on, then, it was our job at the museum to work and collaborate and with those who know how to run a school, know how to put a curriculum together, and just work to make sure that they will be used and preserved for future generations for that highest, that highest good. And this school will have some unique learnings behind it, design thinking and place-making. I'm going to let the smart people talk about that. So, I end my comments by saying, "Thanks to this, to this team. It was very complex works for the involvement of the members of the board and the leadership by all the folks, but particularly of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, to take what I argue is truly a treasure. There is no museum anywhere," this is the Dale Robertson Now view, okay, "that is as broad and as deep a collections anywhere in the state of Michigan. And we are now going to be using it for, say, the highest and best good, the education, as you say, Superintendent Neal, for our children."
On behalf of Kendall, I want to say thank you for having us here, Madam Chair, Superintendent and Board. I would say, I just want to add just a little bit. I want to say what a joy it has truly been to work with this group of people. The strong collaboration between all the entities that Dale just mentioned was pretty amazing. Especially when you consider that you would expect GVSU and Ferris State University and Kendall to all possibly be at odds looking to, I don't know, compete against one another. And I don't feel that in this collaboration. And I am excited that we each bring our piece of expertise to this table, and I think in the most dynamic and exciting way for the students to learn. I think the curriculum, different from what Dale was just saying, those artifacts and that place-based learning are going to bring such value for the students. And the other component that Kendall brings to the table is that the design-thinking curriculum that is so dynamic and engaging that I anticipate just great things coming from, from this fabulous school. So, I'm excited that you would have us, and I appreciate the collaboration from all of the partners.
I agree with all that has been said. And I could talk for great numbers of hours about this project, but I will spare this meeting for doing that. But I will say, similar to a quote shared earlier tonight and what you've shared, I think that our value really is measured by our ability to push others forward. And I think the fact that organizations, that it's not their primary responsibility to care for our K through 12 students, our choosing to step up and do so is unbelievably, unbelievably remarkable. And it's really been my pleasure to be a piece of seeing that happen. And I just really want to give significant praise to that commitment of the key leaders and the commitment of GRPS to think beyond what they have done in the past as well is really significant. So, the COI application says all the rest. It's pretty robust, and it'll be really exciting to see that move into practice. So, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to work with all of you that I've been working with. So, thank you.
Dr. Faul, I would just like to add, on behalf of Dr. Tom Haas from Grand Valley, because they've been with us every step of the way as well. And I'm sure that Dr. Haas would share the same.
I just want to add, since I've worked with all of you so closely, it's been really thrilling. I mean, we've had our bumps in the road, but it's been a great team. And I want to congratulate you on the Centers of Innovation Application. The board has all spent time with it. It is robust. And I think it's an indication of the richness of the collaboration, the depth of the vision. I want to shout out to the GRPS team. I know how much time they put in it. And it's laying a really good foundation for this school. It just makes me feel very confident that this is indeed going to be something unusual. I think it'll get national attention.
I do.
I really do. So, anyway, thank you. Any questions before I call for a motion? Do I have a motion for approval of the Centers of Innovation Application for the Grand Rapids Public Museum School?
I'll make that motion.
Support? Any further discussion? Mr. Ross, can you call the vote?
Mr. LaGranne.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Faul?
Yes.
That motion passes 9-0.
Just for the record, Dale and I also have some other really big ideas that we can, that we get from while we're running. Lately, they involve leveling all the hills in the Grand Rapids metropolitan area.
Moving on. Next on our action items, we have first reading of Policy 8670. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some moves.
Support for that? Any questions, deliberations? Seeing none, Mr. Ross, can you take the vote?
Mr. LaGranne.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Faul?
Yes.
That motion passes 9-0.
Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda grouping?
Some move. Word.
Mr. Ross? When you are ready.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Faul?
Yes.
Consentage, and the motion passes 9-0.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next on our agenda, a discussion item regarding the MASB Annual Leadership Conference and Delegate Selection. It is in Grand Rapids this year, and we are allowed four delegates. I would like to ask the board for consideration of attendance and participating as a delegate. Is there anyone at this time that can commit to that? It's an excellent conference. I've participated both in the conference and as a delegate, as I know. And I think Reverend Matthias did. Reverend Matthias did last year as well.
I have as well.
Mr. Ross?
What's the date on that?
November 6th through 9th.
Nobody's jumping out right now?
Pastor Moody?
Pastor Moody, thank you.
November 6th through the 9th?
Stepping up to the plate, that's fantastic. Any other plans for participation?
I'm considering, I wondered if Mr. LaGranne is talking for the Thursday...
Restorative Practices?
Yes. Did you know about it?
No, I did not.
Well, under consideration. Please be advised. I also want to remind the Board that on Monday, we have a work session, and we will be spending time with a legislative update and anticipating creating our legislative platform for the year, so. Next on the agenda is public comment for agenda and non-agenda items. No public comment. Superintendent's comments.
Once again, I would just like to thank all of the staff members for such a great opening of school. It really did take a team, so I appreciate everything that everyone has done.
Board member comments. Ms. Slade?
No, none today.
Congratulations, welcome back.
Mr. LaGranne?
Superintendent's happy, I'm happy.
Yeah. Happy Superintendent, happy school. Reverend Matthias?
You know, just on the Center of Innovation, just reading through, it was exciting and the potential for our urban kids to see their art, you know, to really see themselves in art as well, and that history, the rich history, African-American, Hispanic and so forth. So I'm really looking forward to that aspect of this venture, so. And it was nice to see our kids in uniform. They really looked good, they were ready to learn. I think it was, it was awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I just want to definitely especially thank you to the new administrator who came on board. Just, you know, your work is sometimes thankless, but definitely appreciated and really just really want to, I guess, take my proverbial cap off to you and say, welcome aboard. I want to Mr. Wade, go Lions too. Had this conversation last week at the football game, so. Mr. O'Connor, he's a Vikings man, so.
He's suffered as long as we have, then.
No, but thank you seriously, though. Welcome aboard.
Dr. Baker?
To follow up on that, it's a really easy job working here. Especially middle school. But I want to, so welcome to them, but also I was, I hope I'm doing the math correctly since we honored math people tonight, but this is a small number of new leadership, and I think that what that says to me is not just that we got some great new leaders, but really that we've, we have a lot of stability in our leadership. And so I was like thinking, wow, this is, this is assistant principals too? And so we're, it's really nice to see that we're, there's not, that people know who to count on year after year, so that's real credit to your administration. I had a great conversation with Ms. Evans tonight about, or this afternoon, about the opening of the school, and she was really happy, so it was really good to hear about how great things were. I want to say something else about the museum project, and I think that what this says a lot about where we're at in this transformation plan or the new GRPS or whatever it is we're saying, is that really that these, these are opportunities for big imaginations to lead to actual outcomes. This isn't just, I mean, this is, I mean, this is kind of a pipe dream, you know, dreamed up on a run, becomes something that can be a national model for education. And I think that that's what the new GRPS really is, because this is all kinds of people coming up with really great ideas that lead to collaboration and institutions working together for the public good. I mean, it's incredible, so I'm really excited about this and the other things that we're accomplishing, so just wanted to say that.
Well said, Dr. Baker.
Just want to say congratulations to all of those who have been selected to be on the staff. It's wonderful to see change occurring. And secondly, I had the opportunity to play golf with Mr. Wade there, so I want everybody to know he is a scratch golfer, so. If you are looking for a partner that you want to win, that's the guy to get. But it, once again, is indeed a wonderful opportunity to see the, the change occur. I think you made some wonderful choices, and it's good to see Brother McMurray being selected as well. I don't think you'll go wrong in that area as well. And I just enjoy the progress that we're making on this school board and with this school district.
I just want to say a thank you to all the teachers and all the staff that have been preparing for this first day and for their dedication for our students and to our superintendent. Meeting adjourned.
Good to know that power really matters as on the golf course.